Hey Springfield, this is Darryl Moss. Everybody calls me D. Today I'll be interviewing Ward 4 City Council candidate Kareem Kubodia. And I'll also be speaking a little bit on the importance of voting and voter education. In our ever-evolving society, voting stands as the cornerstone of our democratic system. It provides us with a voice and the decisions that shape our community. The choices we make at the ballot box resonate deeply within our neighborhoods affecting our daily lives, opportunities, and our aspirations. However, the impact of our vote extends far beyond our individual choices. It collectively shapes the future of our community. Educating voters plays a significant role in ensuring that each voter is equipped with the knowledge and understanding needed to make informed decisions. Conversations we will be having with candidates provide us with an understanding of their platforms, their values, their commitments. It powers us to select representatives who truly align with our vision for the future of our families and our community. An informed voting community is an engaged constituency, one that is conscious of the issues at hand and actively shapes the future by selecting leaders who reflect their community's aspirations. In this interview, we'll delve not only into the candidate's background and aspirations, but also the significance of their vision and a plan for a change in Springfield. With each and every conversation, we'll embark on a journey of shared understanding, responsibility, and empowerment in a way that strengthens the very fabric of our community. And it's critical. I believe that electing a politician is as critical as hiring a lawyer to represent you in court. Have you ever stopped to think about the parallel between politicians and attorneys? Both demand expertise, advocacy, and trust. Just as an attorney represents us legally, politicians represent us in governance. Both roles involve negotiation, compromise, and accountability. Attorneys need excellent communication skills to present arguments persuasively. Similarly, politicians must effectively communicate not only his or her own ideas, but also the ideas of the folks who vote for them. That is how we drive social, political, and economic change. You're voting to put your future, as well as the future of your friends and family, in the hands of a candidate. What we have to do is break the cycle of blind voting. If you wouldn't hire an inept and incompetent attorney to represent your loved one in court, why would you vote for an incompetent politician to represent you in city government on a state level? I mean, think about it. Do your homework. Share the information that you find, and then go vote. With that being said, I'm telling folks, please, voting is critical. It's not the end all to be all. Following up and making sure that you hold the folks that you vote for accountable is just as important, if not more so, than voting itself. So with that being said, I have a guest on the show with me today. His name is Kareem Kubodia. He's an individual who's vying for the Ward 4 seat with the Springfield City Council. Born and raised in Springfield, has a strong educational background from Springfield Public Schools to Carnegie Mellon University. Kareem has served as an intern with Dominic Tonner's administration. He's been an organizer for Senator Elizabeth Warren, and he served as a legislative aide for Congressman Richard Neal. He's a former member of the Board of Directors for the Association of Black Business and Professionals. He's played a significant role with the Black Economic Council of Massachusetts here in Western Mass. And our goal today is to have a conversation with Kareem and find out what Kareem brings to the table. So with that being said, Kareem.
Thank you very much, brother. Thank you for having me today. Just to start off, I really want to make sure I'm emphasizing that point made about the importance of representation. A lot of people that I've talked to, both on the doors and even prior to this, don't feel that they even know what their city council does, or even know what their government does at any level, and how they can best represent them. A lot of people are frustrated right now with how things are looking, both on the city level and around our country. But at the same time, a lot of people feel like their vote doesn't actually count. In a ward where the last election was only won by 93 votes, that seems pretty influential to me in a ward of 12,000 people. At the same time, for me coming into this role, it's part of a promise that I made myself a long time ago. I come from a family of immigrants who first moved from Tanzania into the city to start a better life, to create a family, and to build something special. At Carnegie Mellon, I started off on that track that all immigrant parents want to start off on as either a lawyer, an engineer, or a doctor. As a pre-med track, coming from a family of healthcare workers, it really dawned on me during that time, just from my experiences, both seeing my mother working in the hospital, as well as during my educational experiences. It just really was frustrating, just time and time again, knowing that people were going to their doctors, going to their appointments, and sitting in a hospital bed, not worried about getting better or healing, but worried about going bankrupt, worried about not being able to afford to pay their bills. And for me, I started looking for ways that I could make a difference with that. Treating one patient at a time is crucial work, but I felt that I could do more and I had more to give. I come from a city that, like, I didn't feel that there was a place for me in politics at first. I didn't feel like people that looked like me, or that were from where I'm from, could really find success in local or any kind of government. It wasn't really until a speaker series at my school, where we had a former ambassador under the George W. Bush administration coming to speak to our school about local, state, national, and international issues and policy. At a certain point during the conversation, he brings up Springfield. Obviously, being in Pittsburgh, my ears perked up, and I'm really glad they did, because what he said next, it will never leave me for as long as I live. He referred to Springfield as "the heroin hub of the Northeast."
As what?
The heroin hub of the Northeast. Not the city of homes, not the city of first birthplace basketball, the heroin hub of the Northeast. Now, I don't know about you, Dee, but when people talk about where I'm from, or my family, or anything like that, I take that personally. And it was at that point that I really made a commitment to come back home and work towards a betterment of my city. As I'd said, I don't come from a political family, so that wasn't the easiest of tasks. I had to work my way from the ground up, meeting people where they're at, and working to make sure that I establish myself as somebody that both understood the issues that were going on, but was willing to admit when they don't know something, and at the same time, always committed towards working to create a better tomorrow. Working in City Hall, I think that was one of the most pivotal jobs I can say that I've had up until this day. Working with you, working with Denise, I learned so much. I learned not only where we're at right now, but what got us here historically. And having those conversations about what we could do going forward really influenced a lot of the decisions that I've made up until now. Working both with State Rep Gonzalez at the state level, as well as working at the federal level, both with Senator Warren and Congressman Neal. I'm the only candidate in this race that has experience at all three levels of government. And for me, the importance of that is being able to bring that back home, right here, right into our own backyards.
Okay, that's just up. Good stuff. And I gotta throw this out there. Kareem is one of my former interns when I worked with Mayor Sarno. And Moll Brown, who he is challenging, is a good friend. So I'm the guy in the middle, just so folks understand. Here we go. First question for you. How do we make Springfield/Ward 4, the greater Mason Square community, a place people and families want to move to?
Yeah, well, just to go back to your last statement, I don't really consider myself to be going up against anybody. I'm doing this for the community. Day in, day out, I'm here for the community. That's where I started and that's what I continue to be. And it really, for me right now, the way that we move our city forward, I believe that Springfield is really at a crossroads. There is a lot of energy in the city, and right now, we need to be thinking not about how we want the city to look in one or two years. We need to be planning ahead the next five, 10, 20, and 50 years about how we want this city to look. For me, Ward 4, Mason Square is the heart of Springfield. For too long, we haven't been the priority. And for me, that's where it starts right there, is making sure that we have a voice in City Hall, making sure that we are a priority. There are five candidates running for mayor right now. 21 running for city council at large. This is a historic race. This is the, we are currently living history. But at that same time, we have to ask ourselves, do we actually have representation in Ward 4? The fact that you could sit here and even need to ask that question in the first place should tell you the answer. No, we do not. For me, coming into this role is about making sure that we're fighting day in, day out. The conversations I've had around the quality of life in the city, making sure that we're able to even get our streetlights fixed, or our roads and sidewalks paved. Speeding on side streets, creating dangerous roadways that we can't even have our kids playing on. Making sure that our education system is at the top of its class, making sure that the people, that our students are able to find profitable career pathways or apprenticeships. You know, I went to college myself, but I didn't even know about the opportunities that were within the trades. Knowing that you could do a trade for one, do an apprenticeship for one or two years, and come out easily making six figures. I had known that back then, I might have made some different choices for myself. And also creating pathways to make sure that both homeownership and housing in the city are more affordable. Right now, we are in the midst of a housing crisis around the state, but also here in Springfield. We are 11,000 units short housing. The cost of renting, the cost of a mortgage are virtually the same, and people can't afford to pay that. There are a lot of ideas floating out there, but I come from a background of experience and data. And that's what I want to bring to the table, is making sure that we are creating tangible and comprehensive solutions, both to the issues that we're dealing with, but also looking forward into how we can invest in ourselves and in our community.
Okay. So is there a plan to take some of that from like the theoretical scope into the stage of practicality? Like, how do we do that?
I've been doing this work, like I said, even before.
No, 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 it's not about you. I'm looking at Springfield. I'm looking at Ward 4. My kids live in Ward 4.
Right.
So it's kind of like, as we talk about improving the quality of services, I'm sorry, in terms of how we take Ward 4 and make it a place where people and families want to move to. How do we take everything you're saying now and put that into an actual plan?
Well, yeah, that's what I was, the point that I was going to make is that
Okay.
I've been doing this work without being in office, and the path that got me here, the successes I've had, have been contributing towards this plan. During the pandemic, I was able to write a grant along with ABVP that secured over 200,000 that went to black-owned businesses in our community, as well as investing in internship stipends for black and brown students. For me, a lot of the way that I speak, a lot of the way, a lot of the issues that I focus on, is because either somebody close to me has dealt with that issue, or it's an issue that I experienced myself. Investing in our young people in this community, that's one of the highest priorities that we can do. Not only invest it in their education in high school, but also making sure that they're able to get paid internships. As you said at the beginning, I had, I started off in City Hall doing an internship. That was unpaid. I had to work at the same time at Mercy as a transportation aide, bringing patients from their rooms to their procedures, which is one of my favorite jobs up until now, but I still had bills to pay. I had student loans to pay, and I was putting in total about 60 hours a week and still trying to contribute at home. Being able to afford to get that experience while making sure that you're able to take care of what you need to do, an internship stipend is one way to help with that. That's an example of a smaller thing, but on a bigger scale, we need to be focused on transformative investment in our community. Right now, BVPC as well as Wayfinders, for the past few months, have been working on a tenure plan for our community with a focus on Ward 4. A lot of the issues that I mentioned at the beginning around creating opportunities and pathways for homeownership, investing in local black and brown-owned businesses in our community, creating more pathways for education, career pathways, and apprenticeships. Those are the primary focuses of that plan, and that's based on community input.
Okay. All right, thank you. We have three other questions. Cool?
Sure thing.
Okay, second one. Talk about how affordable, you mentioned you alluded to affordable housing and pathways to homeownership. I think you just expounded on that, didn't you?
No, no, I didn't. You already know I can get into the weeds on this, on these issues. I love that question, but I just bought my first home right in Upper Hill, a two-family home. And I bought it during the pandemic. As I said, I don't come from a local family. I don't come from a rich family. Even getting that down payment assistance together to be able to afford the house, it was a huge stretch. A lot of people come from even less. A 2015 study done by the Boston Federal Reserve found that white families have $247,000 in generational wealth. That's your homes, that's your savings accounts, all of that investments. Black families in Massachusetts have $8. So really, for me, it really starts with focusing on ways that we can build that generational wealth by creating assistance programs, by creating pathways to get people into homes. Black people own homes at a rate of 36% compared to 63% for white households in Massachusetts. And Oh, give me one second. And so, within the past year during the pandemic, as well as a result of ARPA, the state invested in mass housing, called the MassDreams Program, that enabled people to access $50,000 in down payment assistance in their house. That is life-changing amounts of money in order to be able to afford a house. Springfield also has down payment assistance housing programs, as well as the housing lottery. But I don't feel that those programs are expansive enough and inclusive enough of our community. I feel that they're very limited, and that we can be finding ways to both invest more into them, to expand them, to make sure that we are attracting more teachers, as well as first responders, to be able to afford housing. Right? That program is based on the poverty level for the area of median income and poverty levels for this area. But I do feel that that should be expanded to include people with moderate income levels, in that 80% to 120% AMI range. As I said, those are our teachers, those are our first responders, those are the people that are going to come and contribute towards our community. We need to make sure that they have places to live as well. We need to make sure that we're getting rid of slum lords in our community. As I said, I personally am a landlord, and I know how hard of a job it is to maintain a household. But at the same time, it's a privilege. Having people, being able to live in a place you own, for me, it's a privilege, and I take that very seriously. So seeing buildings going up in fire because they're not taking care of the Springfield system, or they're not making the necessary advancements that they need to upgrade their building and make it a safe place for people, but then consistently phasing the rent prices, that's unacceptable. We need to make sure that we're creating protections for our tenants. Like in this community, we have a hot renter base in this community, and we need to make sure that we are actively protecting them. During the pandemic, there were eviction protections, and that was what really, it stopped an entire entire new factor of the housing crisis that we're already experiencing. We also have a high immigrant population right now, and people are having trouble accessing their work visas. So we have a lot of people that need housing, that are looking, that want to be able to work, but they can't, they're not able to because of our federal immigration system. And now, as a result, they're creating a large burden on our already strained housing system. There are no beds for homeless people in this state. Like, you'd be, I've had to help people in the past find beds, and you'd be lucky to even find one. And so those are all problems that we need to be making sure that we're creating comprehensive solutions around, that we're investing in both expanding opportunities, as well as addressing major issues and concerns that would also save us money in the long run.
So as a city councillor, you know, the primary role of a city councillor in city Springfield is zoning and ordinance changes. How do you impact that as a city councillor?
Yeah, so right now, during my time as senior policy colleague with the Black Economic Council of Massachusetts, I was focused on creating pathways to homeownership. One of the things I was working with Andy Vargas on a comprehensive housing bill that would not only create more housing production, as I said, for low and moderate income individuals, but also making sure that we're changing zoning regulations. Right now, out in our east, there is the MBTA community law, which stipulates the housing production for multifamily. There has to be a certain number of multifamily houses that are being built around transit nodes. So creating, making sure that people that live close to trains, commuter rail out there, that we're able to get more people in those houses, and that we're keeping that at an affordable level. As well as allowing accessory dwelling units. That's your in-law apartments, that's being able to convert spaces that you have, either on your property or on your house, into additional units. That is something that should be allowed by right, as a zoning by right policy for cities across the state. That would make a, that would have a huge impact here in Springfield, as well as around the state, and creating more units. Additionally, there is currently a Springfield Housing Trust, Trust Fund, but that hasn't been funded by the mayor, unfortunately. And so that is a major issue. That would be something I would push hard for in the next budget to make sure that we do have funding going towards it.
Okay, and I know city councillor Tracy Whitfield has been fighting hard. It's made her unpopular amongst her colleagues around the table. As we talk about housing, I just remember when we had the influx of Somalians. Working in the mayor's office at that time, and just knowing how unsupportive the city council was, would you be willing to stand out to actually support housing plans and helping the city come up with a housing plan as a city councillor, which actually goes beyond the scope of your duty? But, so you're saying, basically, you're going to extend the scope of the city council's work?
I'm glad you asked that question, brother. Yes, that is. As my current shirt says, unapologetically black and ambitious. My fiance, Tricia, made this shirt for me at a time where I was feeling uncomfortable being in my own lane. I was told by supervisors or the powers that be that I had to stick to my own lane, and I lost sight and track of who I am as a person. I am unapologetically black and ambitious. I don't believe I have a lane. I do believe that we can expand as much as we set our sights on it, and as much as we dream to. I believe that city power, the city council, has a potential to access new powers, to make sure that we are working to create balances and checks within our city government. That's a deeper conversation for another time. But at the same time, I think that Tracy is a great example of somebody that really is standing 10 toes down on the community. And like her or not, you can't say that she doesn't keep it real, that she isn't about the work and that she isn't about the community. I think that we need more people like her that are willing to fight. I consider myself to be a fighter, to go in day in, day out. I'm willing to also work with people on all sides. I've always been known as somebody that can work with people that I like or that I don't like, regardless of keeping towards that professionalism. I think that's something that we currently have lost sight of within this current seat, of how to make sure that we are working civilly. Additionally, I think that we really need to be looking at the city charter. I come from a Ways and Means background, congressman, and I do believe the legislature should have the right to appropriate funding. That's, that would make a major difference within the city council. I think that that's not, that's not an easy task to take on. But at the same time, I do believe that it is something that is necessary. Regardless of who is elected to the mayor, we'll see, we need to have those checks and balances in play. I'm not a figurehead kind of person that I can only just speak on issues. I'm always looking for ways to create action following that.
Okay. All right, so how do we improve the quality of city services and attention in Ward 4?
Right now, as I said at the beginning, even getting our sidewalks and streets paved is a major issue compared to other communities. I go into Ward 7, and yeah, with street light out, I grew, like, my parents, after immigrating here, they bought a house in Ward 7. And I remember a street light went out. We called it. Within the next day or two, it was resolved. Over here, we've had street lights that have been out for years, that I've never even seen working. I know that numerous reports from numerous people have been put in, but it isn't resolved. We talk about, we talk about public safety and street safety, and having dark streets is not something that really alleviates that problem. We need to make sure that we're brightening up our streets and making sure that our walkways are safe, that people, we've had several major incidents around the city, both including in Ward 4, regarding pedestrians being unfortunately hit by cars. That is something that we need to make sure that we are taking seriously. Additionally, I think that we need to make sure that we're improving our 311 service, updating that to the 21st century, making sure that we, when people do call, they're able to get an effective response and directed towards the proper department or administrative assistant, without it being too much of an individual burden on the workers within 311. I also believe that we need to be investing in municipal fiber as a community, making sure that we are closing that digital gap. A lot of people, when they think about lack of access to internet, they think of our rural communities, Franklin and Berkshire Counties. But in communities of color, that digital divide is a major contributor towards the inequities that we deal with. We really saw that come to a head during the pandemic, when students that didn't have laptops at home, or didn't have access to quality service at home, were automatically put at a disadvantage in terms of receiving their education. That's something we need to be learning a lesson from, and making sure that we are putting those investments to make sure that that is something that doesn't happen.
Okay. Let's see. Good question. Good answer. Good answer. Oh, let me stop for a second and shout out, we have a sponsor for this particular segment. I would like to thank Dr. Katrina Banks from Neurologic Optimal Wellness Physical Therapy LLC. They say whether you had a fall, a car accident, suffer from back pain, have muscle weakness, or movement disorder that has changed your life, they offer mobile and clinic services in which they are there to listen to your concerns, manage your symptoms, retrain your brain to restore movement, provide education on preventative measures of your problems, and help you in returning to do the things that you love to do. They have a strength training program, mobility training program, balance training, fall prevention program, and a whole lot more. Reach out to them. The number is on the ad below. You can always contact Dr. Banks' office by calling 413-318-4776. Thank you to our sponsor. I like sponsors. That gives us the resources that we need to continue providing this platform. So with that being said, thank you, everybody. Please support Neurologic Optical Wellness Physical Therapy. She also said to make sure I inform folks that you don't have to be in a car accident to seek out a physical therapist. There are so many different needs and concerns that we have in terms of maintaining our bodies, services that, you know, physical therapists do provide. So please, contact Dr. Banks. You have a problem, give them a call first. All right, so let's go to our next question. You ready, sir?
Yeah, before you, before you ask that question, I do want to make sure that I am shouting out Dr. Banks as well for the work that she's been doing, both in the community and in her capacity with her wellness and physical therapy business. I think that another thing that I want to mention in terms of the quality of life that I would be remiss if I didn't call attention to is making sure that our seniors are able to age gracefully in their homes, that they have access to transportation, to wellness services, like physical therapy, or in order to get transportation to their other appointments. Taking care of our senior citizens is a major priority of mine, and I want to make sure that that's set, as well as in terms of property taxes. That's something that we have right now, as a contributor to our housing crisis as well. 8% of the houses that are being bought are bought by out-of-state investors. They're buying, they're buying out properties from people, and then forcing them, especially with seniors, and then trying to force them to rent at a higher price with the intention of kicking them out of their homes. We need to be protecting our seniors and their homes, as well as making sure that we are not increasing property taxes, especially for seniors, making sure that we're able to keep that affordable. We have an increase in utilities as well, that we need to make sure that we are providing quality service, but it has to be affordable. First and foremost, right now. First and foremost right now, uh, I think a lot of people are struggling with paying their bills and, and just to get by. And so we need to make sure that we're looking out for them.
And that would also include tax title foreclosures, which are also under eyes. Given that the administration has raised taxes for what, eight, maybe nine consecutive years in a row?
Nine consecutive years.
I'm sorry?
Not yet, you're right, nine consecutive years.
Nine consecutive years. And tax title, it's one of the things that we tend to overlook. And outside of councilwoman um Tracy Whitfield, no one else has even raised the issue of tax title foreclosure. So with some of the funding that we're receiving from the feds, some of those dollars could go to enhance our tax title program. And I hope that, you know, should you be successful, that you strongly take that into consideration as well in terms of taking on that battle for residents of Springfield.
That's right.
Next question, can you discuss your strategy?
Give me one second. Sorry about that, I just had somebody at the door, but I am back.
Okay. Can you discuss your strategies to encourage partnerships between black-owned businesses and local government? Slash changing the city's procurement processes for creating opportunities for young people with workforce development apprenticeships? And also, um, I'm gonna add to that. Help to form a stronger alliance between the Office of Planning and Economic Development, which determines the city's economic outlook. And communities like those that reside in Ward Four.
Yeah, I think uh, first and foremost, when we look at how our, our government works, both at the local, state and federal levels. Uh, procurement is one of the most profit, like, one of the highest expenses that our government has. That means hiring local vendors and businesses to contract the city, whether that's uh, the tolling services that uh. City uses or when they contract out for building new buildings or creating roof, uh, resolving a roofing issue. Or even uh providing office supplies to a city. Those are all things that they would contract out. And ideally, they would be hiring locally for that. At the same time, I think that as we look towards the future, we really need to revolutionize the way that that system works. Uh, during my time as well at Beckman, I was working on inclusive uh procurement reform. Uh, revolutionizing the chapter thirty B uh rules and regulations to make them more accessible. For uh, black, uh, brown and minority-owned businesses as well as for veteran and women-owned businesses. Making sure that we are actively keeping track of the, the system that we use to make sure that people know what opportunities are out there. But also that the government knows that these businesses that are out there that are willing to do the work. One of the most frequent issues that I've heard. Since forever, from the beginning of my career, has been that uh, on the city side, it's been that we don't know. These businesses, we're putting out these RFPs and nobody's putting bid out. At the same time, from our business owners, we're hearing that. We are either applying for these bids and we're not getting them, or that we're not even hearing about them. And the first ones, uh, we've all had discussions about the, the pay-to-play politics. Um, but that is something that we need to make sure that we are creating equity in that space for. We need to make sure that we are also encouraging, not encouraging, but uh ensuring. That businesses, when they do secure contracts, that they are paid out on time. A lot of these contractors are responsible for paying their subcontractors and employees. And when you're waiting ninety days for, for a payment. How are you supposed to pay your, your employees in, in the meantime? How are you supposed to keep that workforce on board? Um, as a member additionally of the Access, Inclusion, Diversity Committee. Uh, and pointy during, for the Holy Hope Soldiers Home Reconstruction. Another issue that I, that I want to make sure I dealt with directly was the issue around our project labor agreements. I'm huge on creating opportunities for uh apprenticeships as well as in uh labor unions. But at the same time, a lot of our black minority, women-owned and veteran-owned businesses. Have been excluded from major public statewide construction projects as well as uh local construction projects. Because of how project la- labor agreements have been designed through the history of the state and in many other places around the country. Uh, a lot of times when uh, a firm would bid. For one of these contracts, it would be required to agree to a project labor agreement. That is uh, the standards by which all the um. All the tasks are bid out, all the jobs are bid out, making sure that like, just to give you guys like an example, like. Brief background of what a project labor agreement is, uh determining, making sure that there's no strikes or making sure that there is. Proper arbitration clauses. Well, one uh, one clause that is included in project labor agreements. Is around um, using uh labors from the union pool. Not being able to use your own core employees. I don't know about you, but if, when I work or owning a business. I want to work with people that I've known, that I've hired and that I have personal experience with. I was able to, for the first time in history, uh, recommend uh certain policy recommendations and creating opportunities. For minority women and veteran-owned businesses to retain their core employee workforce. I was also able to make sure that we were reaching through my recommendations, that we were uh increasing. The demand for apprenticeships and hiring locally for uh our minority owned uh. Our minority labors and workforce, making sure that we are connecting in the community, making sure that we are reaching out. As I said before at the beginning of our conversation, a lot of people don't know about the apprenticeship opportunities that are out there. Um, and how lucrative that they can be. At the same time, uh, I have spoken. With labor groups around the state and they are actively, actively, actively trying to. Get more people to be a part of the unions. These are good-paying jobs when we look at.
But, but I, I, let me, I, not, this will have to jump in. Typically, I don't challenge, but sometimes I do. I know we're trying to work with the unions of um, a while back, uh Denise Jordan, myself, we worked with the unions. They, they, you know, we came to meetings, had community-based meetings. Um, it's interesting, we were having meetings around the city, recruited a number of young black and Latino men, women. And everything started out fine. But once our part of, of the process was over. People are running into a long series of obstacles. So I just don't want to give people the, the impression that unions are actively working. To um, find, secure and, and retain. Black, I, I, again, my focus is primarily on black people. So they have not been active in that and they have been consistent. And once our, once the city part is out or once the activist part is out. They go back to, you know, a long series of roadblocks and obstacles and I think it's gonna require, you know, further conversation. With union reps. Because I, I understand, I hear what you're saying and a part of me says, yeah, on paper, that's what they say. But in terms of practicality, that's not happening. And I just don't, I want to make sure that anyone watching understands that. It's not that easy, the unions are not. Otherwise, we, we would not have the problem of city councillors checking off and signing off from pyramid contracts. Knowing that they haven't worked with a single black or Latino um, business in years. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
No, I definitely appreciate that. And yeah, I can't go without saying that there is a long history. From the onset of uh, unions, of racism, especially towards uh, the black community. And so that's something that definitely is an awesome.
I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, now, I interrupted your thought. Were you done with that particular question or?
Yeah, I completely lost my place on, on that one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm loving everything you're saying. I'm saying, okay, this sounds really great. Um, as long as there's actually playing behind everything you're saying, this is awesome. But um, there's certain things that trigger me, it's activists in media says, oh, hold up. No, 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 we fought that battle and that's not how, that's not how the story, our narrative was. So that's all. Um.
That's the balance that we constantly face uh in government. Is making sure that we are working towards progress, where we can't lose sight of the history. We can't lose sight of uh, the negatives that are presently occurring or that have historically happened. We talk about historically underrepresented and underserved. These are the issues that we're, that we're talking about that like brings it to real-life focus. Having access to a profitable job, profitable job uh without being within certain uh, communities or demographics. That is an issue that we deal with in this city.
Absolutely. I'm just gonna throw it out there, there's a lot of bias, racism still exists. And, you know, we're dealing with the same obstacles, we're still dealing with the shadow of everything we've been dealing with back in my day. So. I feel for young people, which leads me to my next question. Can you address the current wave of violence in Springfield? We've lost a number, number of young people for the last couple of weeks. Some folks, I, we had a conversation the other day with city councillors. Justin Hurst, um Tracy Whitfield, um Donnie Wright, a community organizer activist. And even some of the folks on the sidelines was chiming in, it was a live conversation. People were addressing it as if this is something new. Whereas typically, if you follow the trend in Springfield historically, every year around this time, we have a binge of murders. Um, by October, November, December, we run into it again. So this is nothing new. Can you address the current, the, the wave of violence that, that hits us? And do you have an action plan or a thought on how you can use your position as a city councillor to address the violence?
Yeah, uh, first and foremost, like. It does break my heart, my parents, my families, all the mothers that have lost sons, all the community members that lost friends and brothers. Um, but at the same time. When we, we can't allow our, our elected officials to only rely on thoughts and prayers. That is unacceptable right now. Um, the US is the only country, the only developed country on this planet that is dealing with this issue. There are common sense and comprehensive legislative reforms that can be implemented to both. Uh, address the problems that is, as it is around making sure that we are taking legal uh, and unregistered firearms off the street. But additionally, for me, this really starts um. At the, at the roots. We have to be working as a community to make sure that we are addressing the root causes, that we are addressing. How we're working together, that we're working together to uh, kind of police our own communities at the end of the day. What we call the police, that's. After crimes happen. There are plenty of opportunities for us to intervene uh, before that. And at the same time, I really want to make sure that uh, we're bringing it back to the, the economic and education issues. I, I believe that a lot of uh, crime can be direct, it can be directly tied to that based on the data. And based on lived experiences of people in this community. When you have uh, when you're addressing those issues, it does impact the crime levels. There's a direct correlation to that. At the same time, uh, there also is, uh, there are several pieces of major legislation. At the State House, uh, right now, this, this session of Beacon Hill. Around creating gun reform legislation, um, as well as AG Campbell introducing. Uh, legislation around ghost guns, making sure that we're able, those are uh, guns that aren't able to be traced, that can be three-D printed at home. Or uh, pieces that can modify a gun, like a switch on the back of gun to turn a semi-automatic pistol into fully automatic. And so those are things that can be three-D printed at home. I don't have, like, they are loopholes right now around registration that. Uh, can actually, for example, uh, if the police are aware of a house that is printing three-D guns. There are the, the way that the rules work, sometimes that they can know that, they can get a warrant, go into the house. But then they won't be able to actually formally charge them because of the way that these loopholes allow. These, these bad actors to, to kind of carry on. So we need to make sure that we are closing those loopholes. We need to make sure, I spoke with uh, spoke with the AG last month during her open house, uh, when she came down to Springfield. Uh, and as I said, there's state house legislation. And at the same time, there are people within our, I'll, I'll just directly say it. Our uh, current city councillor in Ward Four. Uh, directly said that there, no one knows what we can do about gun violence. There are comprehensive legislative reforms. We do know. What the issue is. At the same time, somebody that touts their experience at the State House, that still isn't with the program and doesn't know. About that being one of the major issues that uh, the house is trying to deal with this session. That is very problematic for me and I, I don't feel that that is an accurate representation of where we're at as a, as a community. Or it doesn't represent our needs going forward. And that is another major reason that I am running for this office.
Okay. Um, all right. Is there anything else you would like to add before we conclude this conversation?
Yeah, I really want to make sure that I, um, all in all, like throughout this conversation, I, I've highlighted. Importance of addressing these issues from a data and evidence-based perspective, making sure that we are. Addressing the root causes. Uh, and I've highlighted several ways that, in which we can do that. But at the end of the day. I want to make sure that I'm reemphasizing that none of it works without community. At the end of the day, this really is on us to make sure that we are advocating for each other, to make sure that we are supporting each other. And to make sure that we are checking each other when we need to. I really do think that we have so much potential in this community that we can tap into. And I want to make sure that I'm helping lead that charge forward. I want to be part of this next era. Of excellence and here in Springfield. And it really, it starts here, it starts today. I would encourage everybody to please visit my website. VoteAbdulKareem.com. That's V O T E A B D U L K A R E E M. Dot com. That's my, my tag on, on all socia as well. Uh, Facebook as well as my, my Gmail. So please feel free to reach out if you have any questions or if you'd like to talk. Deeper about these issues. I really want to make sure that I'm tapping into uh, all communities throughout Western, uh. Throughout Ward Four. I want to make sure that uh, I am tapping in with our immigrant communities. Uh, because I would be remiss being from Tanzania myself if I wasn't giving. Power to those voices. I want to make sure that I am tapping in with our Latino communities as well, which is an increasing demographic. Here in this district. Ultimately, the goal is to unify and to build. We shouldn't be fighting over the same piece of the pie. We should be finding ways to access the whole pie. I believe that the people closest to the problems should be closest to the problem.
Okay. All right, well, we appreciate um Kareem Cambodia's time. His willingness to share his plans for a better Springfield is through the effort to pass to individuals like him that our city can drive and grow. As residents, we have an important role to play in supporting candidates to prioritize community, welfare and progress. And again, I want to say thank you Kareem for your insight and to our audience for joining us in this enlightening conversation. Let's all work together to build the Springfield that we envision, one that's prosperous, inclusive and united. Kareem, thank you so much for your time. Good luck in September. You have a primary.
Uh, because it's just two of us, we go straight to uh, November and the general.
November.
Um, but I would still encourage everybody to make sure that you are uh registered to vote and that you are voting for the primary. As I said, there, there are a lot of dope down to people running for office at this time and your voice does matter and it does count.
There it is. All right, with that being said, this is Live with D Moss. I want to thank everybody for watching. If you have any comments, please hit the comments. If you, if you enjoy what you're watching, click the like button. If you'd like to get involved in Mr. Cambodia, Key Bodia's campaign, um, follow his website, give the website one more time.
VoteAbdulKareem.com.
Okay. I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Vote Abdul Kareem on Facebook and on uh, my website as well as my Gmail. And my actual account, if you'd like to donate to the campaign as well. One of the uh, the lessons I've learned on this campaign is that it really is the people that help propel us forward.
And this day in black panties, they all power to the people. With that being said, all right, I want to say thank you and have a wonderful day.